And we'll begin with a roll call, beginning with Counselor Bogdan.
Becky Bogdan.
Catrice McKay.
George Handley.
Gary Garrett.
Rachel Whipple.
And I believe Counselor Hoben is online with us. Or if he's not, he will be soon. And then Counselor Christensen is excused tonight. We also welcome Mayor Kafusi. We'll begin with an opening prayer. Our prayer will be offered by Megan McMillan. She's a new intern to the council and has agreed to offer our opening prayer tonight as an MPA student at BYU.
Dear Heavenly Father, we're grateful that we can all gather here together and take part in this meeting. And we're grateful for all of the people willing to be here. Please help us that we'll be able to have good discussions and that we can all travel home in safety in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Megan. And the pledge of allegiance will be provided by Counselor Whipple.
Please stand and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Counselor Whipple. First, we have a special presentation tonight. Recently, several city residents have completed their participation in the Provology course. And, and so we're looking forward to participating in their graduation exercise tonight. And we'll turn the time over to Scott Henderson, our city CAO for that recognition. And Mayor Kafusi.
If you could join us, Chair Garrett, for the diplomas. Well, Chair Garrett, Vice Chair Whipple and City Council, we want to present to you the spring 2025 class for Provology. As a group, they now represent the most well-informed citizens on their municipal government. We are going to be joined by the mayor for this presentation. And after we present their diplomas, a dinner social is waiting for in the community room right across the hall. And but we would ask after you receive your diploma, please stay up here with us. And because we'll be taking a great picture afterwards. So if it's okay, could we start our music? John Bear. Danielle Benini. Rebecca Brailsford. James Brookhart. Stephen Crandall. Rebecca Dawn. Bill Eliason. Karen Eliason. Haley Garner. Eileen Hathcock. Elizabeth Hedengren. Paul Hedengren. Valerie King. Sherry LaFleur. And that is the class, Spring Class Provology 2025. Council members, we get a picture?
You have the timeout.
Maybe stand behind the desk, Gary was saying.
And we welcome Counselor Hoben as well. I mistakenly indicated earlier that he was joining us online. Thanks, Counselor. We'll now begin the period of public comment during our meeting. As indicated on the screen, a required public hearing will be held for certain agenda items prior to council action. After each such item has been presented, time to comment will be provided for all who wish to speak. For items that do not require a public hearing, public comment will still be taken following the presentation of the item. At this time, up to 15 minutes have been set aside for open public comment, which is intended to allow comment on matters that do not appear on the agenda, but are still limited to topics regarding municipal business or within municipal council purview. During any public comment period, each speaker is generally limited to two minutes. During, due to noticing requirements, no formal action will be taken in this meeting on matters that do not appear on the agenda. Those who have comments are invited to approach the podium at this time. Just state your name and city of residence. And then go ahead with your public comment. If we have any online as well, we'll follow that and give them an opportunity also. Are there any here who would like to make a public comment? All right. We'll close public comment then and move forward with our agenda. We're now going to recess the municipal council, if there's no objection, and convene as the Stormwater Service District governing board by unanimous consent. Okay, so as the Stormwater Service District Governing Board, we'll now discuss a resolution tentatively adopting a proposed budget for the Provo City Stormwater Service District for fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. This item will be presented by John Borget, our Administrative Services Director. Welcome, John.
Welcome. Thank you. Council and Chair Garrett, pleasure to be here. This, we are here to deliver this budget. I would just mention that the budget is, the total budget is $6,209,436 in the tentative budget. We have provided, you can act, as part of our city, part of our, on our city website, we will actually have this available for individuals to see. And I'm going to talk specifically a little bit later about how to access that, but we can pull it up right now as far as the budget, the tentative budget. So you can pull that up, Kevin. Okay. And this is, this is on page 141 of the city budget. I think each of you have that now. And so that's just kind of shows on that right-hand column what the tentative budget is for 2026. And it's just to mention that we will be having two public hearings on the 3rd of June, as well as the 17th of June. For those residents that want to come in and ask questions or make comments, we'll have that time period open. And so with that, I'm prepared to answer any questions.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions for Mr. Borget on the Stormwater Service District? Thank you, John. This item is open for public comment. If there are any who have come to speak to this issue, you're welcome to approach the podium at this time. If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item to the council for discussion. Any discussion counselors or questions? Counselor Whipple.
John, I'm just now looking at this. Thank you for telling us what page to go to. Looking at this, am I right in understanding that we now have a negative fund balance for the Stormwater Service District?
Yeah, and, and that's not unusual for an enterprise fund. Where they're doing capital spending for projects, there'll be times when there's, there's both positive and negative. And so I would say that's, that's not alarming. You'll see that they've got capital expenditures of 3.3 million. So they're, they're spending just a little bit more than they're bringing in. But as with capital spending goes, it tends to sometimes be, depending on the projects, it can be a little lumpy. You may have one year where they're a little less, another year where they're greater. I would also say that if you wanted any more further detailed questions, capital spending is, you know, Gordon Haid would probably be the person to talk to, but, but I would say it's not alarming with capital projects.
And is part of that because our capital expenditure was so much more during fiscal year 2025 than it had been in previous years? Like it is, where we just, this was the year to do this stuff?
Intentionally utilizing money that had been built up through fees over time. And so, yeah, then, then, then it's a decrease. Jimmy might be able to explain this too. That'd be great.
So I, I show that we, one of, one of the actual ending fund balances is incorrect in the, one of the old years. So I'll get with finance and get that corrected. I show that we're in '26 won't be having an ending negative fund balance. But John is correct that the '25 capital adjusted budget includes some carryover money that is, is why it looks so high. The adopted budget was closer to the 3.3.
Okay. All right. Um, thank you.
Good question.
Yeah, well, there will be more later, but not yet.
Well, I would just mention for the residents that this is the first time that the council's having an opportunity to see this. And over the next month or so, we're going to be having many discussions. And so, so yes.
Yes, thank you, John, for adding that.
Yeah, I was just really surprised to see a negative fund balance because since I've been on the council, you have been zealous about guarding and protecting those. So I didn't know that sometimes we, we dipped and.
Well, when, when I was talking about the negative, I was talking about the $462,000 negative number there. But we'll, we'll go back and look at the ending fund balance and get to the bottom of that.
Okay, thanks.
Any other council discussion? Yes, Counselor Bogdan.
So I just wanted to make sure I understood this correctly, Jimmy. So this ending fund balance will not be a negative at all once you get the numbers adjusted? Because I'm not feeling comfortable with negative numbers in ending fund balances at all.
That's correct. I show the actual ending fund balance in FY '24 was 5.97. And based on the revenue we've seen this year, I show that the ending fund balance will be over $300,000 to the positive, not 1.7 negative.
Okay, so $300,000 to the positive?
Yes.
So you'll send that to us so that we can get the updated version?
Yeah, so that, that will be in, we'll get that in the changes that happen between this budget and what you adopt.
Okay, thank you.
Officially in June.
Thank you, Jimmy. Any other questions or discussion? If not, I'll call for a vote on the motion. Counselor Bogdan?
No.
Counselor Garrett? Yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
So the motion to tentatively adopt this proposed budget passes by a vote of five to one with Counselor Christensen excused. We will now adjourn the Stormwater Service District Governing Board, if there's no objection, and convene as the Provo Redevelopment Agency Governing Board by unanimous consent. And for this portion of the agenda, we'll turn the microphone to Board Chair Counselor Rachel Whipple.
Hello, welcome to the new meeting. On the RDA business, our first one is a resolution tentatively adopting a proposed budget for the Redevelopment Agency of Provo City for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025 and ending June 30th, 2026. This also will be presented by John Borget, the Director of Administrative Services.
Yes, and this is the copy of the tentative budget for the Redevelopment Agency. As I mentioned before, we will be having public hearings related to this budget as well on the 3rd of June and the 17th of June. And we will be spending time with the council reviewing the details of this budget and being prepared to respond or answer any questions. And I would also mention that adopting the tentative budget doesn't mean that that you're actually adopting or saying that you agree with all the numbers. It's just stating that you've received it. And you are now prepared to start your review of the tentative budget. Any questions for me on, on this budget?
So on this budget, we've had some change in personnel for the Redevelopment Agency. Is this taking into account how we're paying for Melissa McNally and her staff with the agreement that we've done with the city?
Yes.
Excellent. And I see that in 2025, we had a huge tax increment expenditure. But we're not anticipating it to be that big again in 2026?
That's correct. And as far as being able to explain exactly the reason for the decrease, probably a better question for Melissa and something that we can discuss between now and then. I, I can't tell you exactly right now why the difference, but that's the number that's included in the tentative budget.
All right. Well, I look forward to, to reviewing this and, and getting to understand the numbers that are presented. Are there any other questions from the board? Okay, we'll open this item for public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll return back to the board. Is there additional discussion on this item? All right, in that case, um, we, we need a motion to approve this? Or no, have we changed that already in the handbook?
You've already changed that. So now you have an implied motion on the table.
Thank goodness. Okay, so this is now an implied motion on the table. And so we can just vote on this. So the, the implied motion is whether we will tentatively adopt this proposed budget. Um, Board Member Garrett?
Yes.
Handley?
Yes.
Hoben?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Whipple is yes. Bogdan?
Yes.
And Board Member Christensen is excused. That vote is six zero in favor. Our next item, a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement regarding property located within the Mountain Vista Business Park. This will be presented by Melissa McNally, the RDA Executive Director, or Director. We're happy that you're here, though.
Hey, thank you. So this is a resolution to agree to a memorandum of agreement. And this is for, we talked about this a few weeks ago in, in the work session. And this is to allow Hall Labs to sell the property that they had initially bought from Provo City. And it also obligates the new buyer to continue to mitigate the property in Mountain Vista. So that's what the memorandum of agreement is. It makes sure that we get the, the property there cleaned up the rest of the way.
All right, so we had already sold this property to them with conditions that they would do mitigation from when it was the old, what, iron?
Yes, and iron steel.
The iron steel factory. Now they wish to sell it. The mitigation is not done. And so this approval allows them to sell it and also transfer over the obligation to get the mitigation done.
Yes.
All right. Is there any question for Melissa about this from our board? All right then, thank you. We can open this item for public comment. The public is silent. All right, I'll bring it back to board for discussion. All right, we will now call for a vote on the implied motion. Board Member Handley?
Yes.
Board Member Hoben?
Yes.
Board Member McKay?
Yes.
Board Member Whipple is yes. Board Member Bogdan?
Yes.
Christensen is excused. And now Board Member Garrett?
Yes.
That vote passes six zero in favor with Board Member Christensen excused. Our next item is a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with Provo City regarding the Freedom Plaza Community Development Project area. This also will be presented by Melissa McNally.
Thank you. So this item is an amendment to an interlocal agreement that, that Provo is already participating in for the Freedom Plaza project development. We entered the agreement originally a few years ago. And we entered to help provide parking for the convention center. That's, that was the goal of this community project area. So when the, when the agreement was executed, it was at a 75 tax increment participation rate. And in our development agreement between PEG development and, um, sorry, the participation agreement between PEG development and Utah County and Provo City, it was stated that we would participate at 100% of the tax increment. And so this amendment is just to fix that agreement from the 75% that is recorded up to the 100% that we initially agreed to.
Always good to get things cleaned up so that there's a nice meeting of the minds. We know what we're doing and the documents reflect that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, great. Are there any questions from the board? All right, I'll open this item for public comment. Okay, seeing no public comment, we'll close that and come back for board discussion. And they are quiet. Okay, we will call for a vote on the implied motion. Board Member Hoben?
Yes.
Board Member McKay?
Yes.
Board Member Whipple is yes. Board Member Whipple is yes. Board Member Bogdan?
Yes.
Christensen is excused. Board Member Garrett?
Yes.
And Board Member Handley?
Yes.
That passes by a vote of six zero with Board Member Christensen excused. All right, if there's no objection, we will now adjourn the RDA Governing Board and reconvene as the Provo Municipal Council by unanimous consent.
Thank you, Board Chair Whipple. We'll now continue with the council business with the next council item, which is a resolution approving an interlocal agreement with the Redevelopment Agency of Provo City regarding the Freedom Plaza Community Development Project area. This will be presented by Melissa McNally, our RDA Director.
Thank you. So again, this is just the agreement for for it's an, excuse me, an amended agreement for Provo to participate in the Freedom Plaza area at one hundred percent of the the tax increment from the area based on the participation agreement.
Great. Any questions for Melissa? All right, thank you, Melissa. This item is open for public comment. If there are any who would like to speak, they can approach the podium. Thank you. We'll then bring the item back to the council for discussion. And seeing none, we'll call for a vote. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
That item passes by a vote of six zero with Counselor Christensen excused. Next, we have a resolution tentatively adopting a proposed budget for Provo City for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and twenty five, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty six. This will be presented by Mayor Kafusi and Administrative Services Director John Borget.
Chair Garrett and Vice Chair Whipple and members of the Provo Municipal Council, to you is given the important task of setting the annual budget. Thank you for allowing me to present this proposed budget to you. As in the past, my primary focus has been to deliver a budget that is responsive to your budget priorities you have provided to me. I love that in Provo, the budget is more of a dance between two partners than a tug of war. I try really hard to lean to your preferences, and you have regularly shown a desire to similarly bend to mine. This model of governance through collaboration and a spirit of goodwill serves our residents well. So thank you again for working to make our shared public service more of a dance than a war. I'm thrilled that even in a climate of increased expenses for the city and lower than expected revenue, we have been able to deliver on your priorities and deliver a balanced budget. This was not easy. I have to give a special shout out to my Chief Administrative Officer, Scott Henderson, for his talented leadership. As one example, Scott knows that it would be easy, for example, to announce a five percent cut across all departments. But he also knows that's not the way to ensure we're making the right decisions. Scott instead extended trust to our directors and invited them to come to the table to generate ideas together. This approach, while far more time consuming and complicated, shows respect for other leaders and breeds a spirit of cooperation. Together, he and our department directors came up with a range of efficiencies and reductions that reflect common sense and good judgment. And our team was strengthened in the process. So hats off to Scott and to all my directors for their incredible work. There are many accomplishments in this budget, but I'm most proud of what has what it has done to signal continued support to our law enforcement officers through increased pay, new equipment, and positive adjustments to benefits. The strength of Provo rests largely in the hands of our dedicated public safety officers. It's a pleasure to provide whatever support we can to them, including through our budgeting process. This budget is focused on Provo residents, and it exists because of them, and its purpose is to benefit them. The same is true of our entire organization. We exist to benefit the people of Provo. The budget includes no proposal to increase property taxes, just like each proposed city budget I've submitted in the past. John Borget is the one who shepherd us shepherds us through the budgeting process and oversees the many details involved in its preparation. As with past years, he will present the details of the budget to you. He and his team, including Dan Follett, Kelsey Zarbuck, and Andrea Wright, have been absolutely amazing once again. I thank them and the entire Provo team, including you, for your hard work on this, and now humbly submit it to you for your consideration. That's the end of the budget letter, and as promised, I will now address water rates. Council members, I appreciate you very much, and thank you for the chance to show you a compromise proposal and some reasons for it. Your passion for Provo and our infrastructure is to be celebrated. Thank you for your work on this. I want to mention a couple of things at the outset. Traditionally, this budget presentation is simply that, a presentation. We are now going to lay out our water rate proposal for you just in really high, broad terms. We have written materials about the proposal that will be provided to you and the residents. You will certainly be able to review it all at your leisure. But you'll notice that our consultant is not here tonight. He let us know over a week ago that he had another commitment. If you would like an opportunity to dive into any technical details or ask questions of our team and consultant, we can absolutely schedule that for another meeting. As you know, our city government is set up so that you, as a council, will get to determine our water rates. I would now like to review some basics for all our benefit, including the residents. Our residents have been asking a lot of questions, and I thought it would be good to start by us answering some of those. I've shared these questions in advance with our Public Works Director Gordon Haidt, and this content is based on discussions with our consultant. So I'm going to ask Gordon to join me up here, and he'll answer the questions. I picked the questions that have been asked the most to me. So the first one is, we keep hearing about a study having to do with our water infrastructure. So what exactly is the study? And can you tell us what it is and what it says? And if you need a reference, I got it right here.
Okay, thanks. Yes, Mayor. So the study that, oh, you're you're with us, okay. I got scared, somebody came up behind me. Okay, no. So the study we're talking about is the Water Master Plan. The city has hired Bone Conn's, which is one of the premier water resource engineer firms regionally here in the in the in Utah and around the region. And Keith Larson is the project manager that did this project. This master plan looks at all aspects of our water system, including the sources, the storage, the distribution, and how we run it. And as a result of that, the plan comes out and makes recommendations for the next ten years that the city should look at and attempt to accomplish as it moves forward. So I wanted to just kind of address three items that talk about the funding aspects of the Water Master Plan. The first is, the Water Master Plan indicates that the city has done a really good job. Water Department has been very effective in the past in taking care of our water system. Number two, it indicates that the city is spending about six million dollars a year in capital projects to improve the system. The third item is it recommends an increase to the water funds for more capital projects. And what I wanted to do was actually read the comment out of the the master plan, so we understand why this request was in there. So this is on page fourteen, three. This large increase is recommended in recommending funding is a function of the massive amount of construction inflation observed over the last few years. Because much of the city's infrastructure is still in relatively good condition, it may be acceptable to transition rehabilitation and replacement funding to these higher levels over a period of time. So the reason for this increase isn't because there's been mistakes or there's been a problem with the system. We've had excellent staff that has done a great job, but the inflation is a worry for the consultant, and that's why there was a request or a request or a recommendation to look at additional funding.
Thanks, Gordon. The second most asked question to me was, you said this study covers a ten year period, but it also talks about an eighty year period. So what's that all about?
So the master plan, we we anticipate that this master plan will stay in force and we'll be looking at it till the year twenty thirty three. And that gives us ten years to implement these things that are being recommended. However, the master plan also looks out at an eighty year horizon and beyond to make sure that we're heading down a correct path. But there's so many opportunities for changes and different things that the recommendations are left for the ten year period. So for that eighty year period, what the what the master plan does is it looks at all of our infrastructure and determines the the life of that and how how that would be, how that, how much we can expect to the the infrastructure to last. It also goes through and looks at the cost of the entire system, how much it would cost if we had to go in there and replace every aspect of it during that eighty years. However, the master plan does not say that you want to replace every aspect of the every element of your system in that eighty year period. For example, we have portions of our system that are fairly old, that are running extremely well. Recently, we had to expose the most important pipe in the city. This pipe is also one of the oldest. It's over a hundred years old, and it transports water year round, more water than any other system to our to our residents. This pipe is in relatively good condition. As we inspected it, has many more years of useful life. So it's important to note that when we look at systems, we got it not only as age considered, but the to see how it's fatigue, if it's wearing, if it needs to be replaced, and what the useful life will be. So those are some of the key key elements. And the last thing I wanted to bring up about this is that Provo has been recognized as having the third purest water in the United States. That means the least contaminants. And that is a direct reflection on our infrastructure. So our infrastructure is experiencing very little contamination and is very good for our residents.
So no, that was perfect. And so this is kind of a fun little personal experience I got to have since we've been focused on infrastructure. It was last week, we had drained the water tank that is, let's see, it's west of the Provo Rock Canyon Temple. It's the one with the sand volleyball pit on top of it. And so it was its turn to be drained and inspected and cleaned and sterilized. So they allowed me to go down in it, and this is like the top five things I've ever done in my life. It was so beautiful and so amazing and so pristine. But let me tell you the history on that water tank. It is ninety five years old. It was built in nineteen thirty. And when it was built, it was the only one of its kind that was in the ground and as big as it was, west of the Mississippi back in nineteen thirty. The projection there was that it would last seventy five years. It is ninety five years old, and with the inspectors, we walked around, we talked, and it is in excellent condition and is such a component in our infrastructure. And just, I'm telling you, it is beautiful. I, that's weird to say, because you probably think when you get in a water tank, it's just rusty and gross. This one in nineteen thirty with the cement columns, it is a beautiful sight to see. And they said it is still in excellent shape. So that was kind of a fun little deep dive I got to do on one piece of our infrastructure in the city this past week. Okay, so the the next most asked question that the residents have talked to me about is what about the thoughts that it's cheaper to replace things now than later?
So some of the questions are, for example, is it cheaper to do a planned replacement versus an emergency replacement? And it's always cheaper to do a planned replacement. So one of the things the city does is we evaluate our system very carefully. And like I said, when we look at it, we're looking at the maintenance history, how many leaks it's had, the age, the condition, and a number of aspects associated with each pipe. So we don't just replace a pipe until we know those conditions have been met. And one of the things that this has allowed us to do is we have not had to do a emergency pipe replacement. We've had to do emergency pipe repairs. In an average year, we'll do about thirty three leaks that we have to repair at about fifteen thousand dollars a leak. And that happens in every system. The fewer is absolutely better, but those, that's something that we watch and monitor very closely. And that comes out of our operation budget as we go forward. So the consultant in talking to them is not recommending to replace everything carte blanche, but to look at these things and to look at this criteria, and that this process that we've been using in the past is the one that we need to go forward with in the future. It's it's kind of a best practice as it allows us to use our money most effectively as we go forward in the future.
You actually answered the last most asked question I got in the top ten is if our consultant isn't asking us to replace everything within within eighty years, why is he asking us to save up enough money to do that?
So part of the consultant's recommendation is a best practice is to make sure you have this money on hand because of the inflation, other unexpected things that could be taking place. So as we look at pipes, some of the pipes may not make it eighty years because of corrosive soils or earth moving. And so having these things to funding to replace these pipes is very valuable. And so that's the position he has taken is to over the next eight years is to have that money so that we're available for those events that do take place, and we're able to do prepared replacements of our pipes, planned replacements as opposed to emergency. So kind of just to recap, our our water department is doing a great job in maintaining their system. They have been effective for decades. And that is, that has is going to continue their process and what they've done. There is the the request for it for the increase was based mainly on inflation. That was the biggest cause stated in the study of why we needed to increase revenue. And it also recommends that we continue our existing approach for the replacement of pipes.
That was awesome. Thanks, Gordon. Thanks, John. Can you just explain a little more? I've just got a couple charts I want to share. So, okay, council members and residents, I now want to walk you through a few things using a chart. So this is looking at the ten year period covered by the plan. On the left, we'll look at the funding recommended by the study, and on the right, we're gonna look at our funding reality today. You can see that on both, we start with some baseline funding. Provo has been spending six million dollars a year on water infrastructure. So over ten years, that will be sixty million dollars of baseline money. By the way, some have been saying Provo has not been saving for water infrastructure, and that's just not true. We have consistently put away significant reserves for big projects so that when the time is right to make a big expenditure, we can do so out of those reserves. I'm talking about reserves specifically for water infrastructure. And then separate from that, we have our rainy day fund, which has been at historically high levels over the past several years. So the narratives that we have not been taking care of our water infrastructure or that we have not been setting aside revenues are incorrect. The study recommends we do rate increases every year for a total of sixty five million dollars in new revenue through the rate increases over ten years. This is on page fifteen dash five of the study. So if we follow the study to a T, we would sit, we would have one hundred and twenty five million dollars to spend on water infrastructure in this ten year period. So now let's look at our reality. As part of our due diligence before supporting any rate increase, my team, led by our C A O, Scott Henderson, and Department Director Gordon Haidt, looked at the Water Division budget, top to bottom. They found efficiencies and other adjustments that will allow us to invest an additional one point one million dollars in water infrastructure every year going forward without raising water rates. For the next eight years, that will mean an additional eight point eight million dollars. And then we did something else the study did not predict. We secured ninety four point five million dollars in outside funding for Provo City Water Infrastructure. Let me say that again. We secured ninety four point five million in outside funding for Provo Water Infrastructure. This has been a recent theme across our departments and divisions. We build partnerships and we secure outside funds to pay for Provo projects. That's been a hallmark of the last several years of Provo governance. There has never been an era like this in Provo's history. The benefits for Provo's residents are astounding. I applaud the creativity of my team that has pulled this plan together. To be clear, if we did not, if we did no water rate increase for the next eight years and if we did not secure another dollar of outside funding, our investment in Provo City Water Infrastructure during the current ten year period will be one hundred and sixty three million dollars. So as far as revenue goes, as far as dollars invested in our water infrastructure, Provo is not kicking the can. We are crushing it. And the fact that we found outside funds to pay for Provo Water Infrastructure is a positive. Outside funding should always be our first choice. Residents' pockets should always be our last resort. Is that the full story? No. We will need more revenue in the future, and it's good to plan for that. I always encourage my staff to look at least twenty years out. The study anticipates the need for additional funding in coming decades. Ongoing funding is stable. If you're going to have higher expenses in the future, saving up for those today is wise. And residents generally generally prefer smaller adjustments over abrupt ones. The council, you all have done a lot of good, hard work to move us towards achieving that stable funding, and I appreciate that. The proposal a couple of weeks ago was great, but I ask you to consider a compromise proposal. The council was considering raising an additional five percent of water revenue this year with the highest group of Provo water users seeing an average increase to their bills of eighteen percent. In the interest of everyone, I'm asking the council to consider the information presented today and consider a new proposal that essentially cuts the increase in half. This proposal will increase our revenue by two point five percent instead of five percent. And the highest user group will see average increases of nine point nine percent instead of eighteen point five percent. Now residents, it's important to know that the state has made it clear, including through legislation, that cities need to implement tiered water rates, different rates for different amounts of water, and they have a conservation purpose. The rates are supposed to encourage people to use less water. A key to good city governance is looking at things from all angles. Consider the residents we heard from who told us that it was Provo City that made them put in large amounts of sod and landscaping. And now it is Provo City that would be hiking their rates eighteen percent in one vote. Fairness is a great principle that has many applications. We want to be fair. You want to be fair about who pays for infrastructure based on the signs of water demand, but we should also keep an eye on fairness in other ways. We urge moderation in the use of water. Significantly, we urge moderation in the use of water. Let us also use moderation in introducing a new billing approach to our residents. We've had a massive infusion of cash for our water infrastructure. Let us use that to bless our residents by allowing a phase in to the water tiers mandated by the state law. Let's educate our residents on water-saving methods that won't damage the beauty and utility of their lawns. Our sustainability team is exceptional and has put together a pamphlet to help with that. Let's get to work and distribute that information and help our residents adjust. On several occasions, you heard this administration indicate that no rate increases were needed at this moment. I hope this presentation and chart helps to explain that still we know your passion on this issue and hope that this middle ground solution provides a path forward that you can support. Full details of my proposal and a calculator showing the new proposal and the original will be provided to you and the public for um consideration. We will have those up and going tomorrow morning at provo.gov side by side. The materials will also be emailed to you shortly if you haven't already received them. Thank you again. This has been a hard process, but I believe your efforts and my efforts have been for the benefit of our residents. John Borget will now present his budget details in his letter.
Wanted to uh walk through what we call the uh budget highlights, but I want to touch on a couple of points before we do that. Uh, the first thing I want to give is is a special thanks to the uh the members of administration as well as the finance team for the work that's been done on the budget. Uh, Kelsey Zarbok uh has done an awesome job. And as most of you know, uh, on April fourteenth, she got a brandy little baby girl named Corinne. And uh, since she's been out, uh Andrea has stepped up and done an amazing job. Andrea Wright, she's here and we want to recognize her for that. She's been doing her responsibilities of the of the budget as well as Kelsey's and just stepping up and adding a lot of value. I would also recognize Dan Follett, who's at a business conference in St. George right now, but thank him for his efforts as well. I wanted to just show um if Kevin could pull up, I want to just show how easy it is for the residents to take a look at the tentative budget. Uh, if you go on to our city website and then you go into the I want to up at the top, and then you can just see right there is city budget. You click on city budget. And then you scroll down a little bit and there's the annual budget. And click on that and down below, you can see the tentative budget. I would also mention that we have uh up up above, I download the city budget fax document. Um, that kind of walks through some key budget facts that residents could look at as far as, you know, what a balanced budget is, what it means to be fiscally responsible, and just helping them have a general understanding on the budget. So that's available now and we would encourage residents to get on and look at this as well as look at the tentative budget and be prepared to come to our public hearings on the third of June and the seventeenth of June to ask questions or uh see if they can find out more about what the budget's about. With that, I would like to uh kind of walk through this budget highlights document. So if you could access that, Kevin, that'd be great. So the budget is the uh is the result of many hours. And by the way, this is on uh page eighteen of in the budget book each of you have of a book if you wanted to pull it up. But budget book is the result of many hours and the contribution from council members, the public, the public, the employees and city leadership. The budget highlights document gives an overview of the considerations factored in the budget process, including new funding sources, personnel cost factors, and new expenditures approved through the supplemental request process. The actual budget document is a hundred and fifty two pages, and there's a lot of detail and a lot of information. So for residents uh and also for the council, if you go to page eighteen and go through these budget highlights, you're getting kind of in a summarized form, some of the key elements that are in the budget. And talk a little bit about considerations in the budget process. Preparation for the fiscal year twenty six began in January of twenty twenty five with the mayor, deputy mayor, city administrative officer, and the administrative budget team looking early at revenue forecasts, projecting retirement and insurance increases, and department needs for the fiscal year. And one of the key things that we also look at at that time, and I would mention that the council has been great at providing this information, are the council priorities. And we look at those council priorities and our great focus goes into be being as we try to help make sure that the budget addresses those. In the current year, with the with the economy slowing, it became clear uh why costs were increasing, several major revenue sources actually decreased from the previous year. And I would mention that sales tax, which is thirty three percent of the general fund budget, is one of those that that had a had a significant decrease. Department directors were very closely involved in the budget development process. Um, during the last couple of years, we've made a special emphasis of bringing them in and having them part of the solution. By having them involved early, it helps us to better understand some of their challenges and work together on solutions. With that in mind, I would mention that the fiscal year twenty six budget supports our ongoing and continued fiscal health with balanced budget. The proposed budget invests in capital improvements, vehicle replacement, and employees. Provo City employees are among the greatest and most critical assets the city has. By investing in them, we are better able to recruit, develop, and retain top employees. The commit, the the administration continues to look for opportunities for employees to grow and become future leaders leaders of the organization. One of the things that we've done for many years, which has been a huge benefit is we have an education assistance program for our employees. And that has encouraged them to go back to school and to better themselves and provide them for future opportunities within the city. So as far as, I want to just talk a little bit about the council priorities and just kind of go through them briefly and talk about how this budget addresses those. Number one was housing and owner occupancy. Well, in this budget, um under zoning enforcement, one of the things that would had been talked about in previous meetings with the council and was included in uh in the priorities was scraping rental software. And what that actually does is provides the information to go out and provide valuable information that can help with zoning enforcement. There's been an RFP in process and there's fourteen thousand dollars in the budget, which our development services team feels would is adequate to address that need. There's also fifteen thousand in the budget for property cleanup and uh specifically on the areas that have been discussed with council on how they can address those needs. The second area is employee retention, specifically with public safety personnel. Um, one of the things that we've done to really help and attract talent is we have a 401K matching program that we've had for years, which is two percent. But with the public safety employees that uh that don't participate in social security, uh, there's been a challenge and there's been other uh comparable entities that have public safety that have offered a richer 401K matching program. So what we're proposing as part of this budget is to add additional two percent for those public safety employees, which would be a total of four percent. We've had Daniel Softly, our human resource director that's been working with the administrative team and feel like this is this is going to be a big help in helping us compete with other entities. We also, um, as we've been working with Chief Beatty, um, there's been some challenges and also with Daniel Softly with with recruiting of police officers. And we found that our starting pay was lower than some of our comparable organizations. And so we are recommending and including as part of this budget, a five percent increase in starting pay for our police officers. And they uh, we feel confident that will help us and give us better able to be able to attract good talent. We also reviewed the supplemental requests from police and fire. And included in this budget are two hundred and ninety two thousand, three hundred and eighty seven dollars that will meet and address the needs that have been brought up by both the police and fire department. And I will go through those supplemental requests a little bit more detail in a few minutes. The third priority was pedestrian safety and uh specifically sidewalks and schools. And included in this budget was some C D B G funding for the Franklin Neighborhoods improvements of a hundred and fifty thousand, Foothills Neighborhoods improvements of a hundred and fifty thousand, B and C Road and Sidewalk replacement of a half a million dollars, and the engineering C I P funding side of replacement of six hundred and fifty five. So that provides um for sidewalks and school replacement, a million four hundred and fifty five, so roughly one point five million dollars. For finding budget solutions, um to import incorporate the council and the council's priority and administrative goals in the fiscal year twenty six budget, department directors met, and I mentioned earlier that they were included. We had an extended meeting and looked for brainstorming and looked for ideas and ways that could increase revenues or decrease expenses across the city. There were many ideas that were discussed, and I'm just going to go through them briefly. First of all, um, the mayor's office had three part-time positions that they proposed would be not funded in this budget to provide savings of about eighty three thousand dollars. Um, met with the police chief, he anticipated that uh his deputy chief would be retiring at the end of the calendar year. And so he proposes an option to not fund that position for the second half of the year was for a hundred and forty seven thousand. Uh, Chief Hedman brought up, uh, we they bring in money from wildland revenues and he had uh about two hundred and fifty thousand in wildland revenues that was sitting there that they were going to analyze anticipate using, but he contribute felt confident that they could do a hundred thousand dollars. And we met with him and reviewed and agreed that that money was available. And so that's included. Uh, Parks and Rec reduced some part-time seasonal for landscaping personnel costs of a hundred thousand. Engineering uh felt that they could contribute another hundred thousand um towards planning and preparing for capital projects. Um, as you know, uh, Gordon Haid, our public works director was previously our engineering division director. And since he was appointed at that to be the public works director, we haven't replaced that engineering division director. And he felt confident that with his skills and abilities and where they're at, that they could do that. So that's not funded in the budget. That provided about a quarter million in savings. Uh, development services has, as they've been collecting revenues and and setting aside funds related scooter revenue, they felt like that based on the levels that they've got right now, that twenty five thousand or roughly twenty six could be included and not not created an expense which provides some funding. Customer service found reductions of sixty three thousand. Uh, Energy's had an appropriated contingency budget that uh that we're eliminating. Feel like if they have a surprise or need to come back to the council, that's the best way to do it. And so we reduced that budget. Water, as the mayor talked about earlier, um, they went through and identified reductions and of one point one million dollars. And then uh, we we included a discretionary budget reduction for all departments of two hundred and ninety four thousand that brings total savings of two point five million dollars. Um, finding these solutions was a citywide effort. Uh, departments all worked hard to find smaller saving amounts and efficiencies. It would mention that there are other savings that were identified that are included in the budget book that are not included in this two and a half million dollar number. Talk a little bit about funding sources. First of all, in accordance with the council and administrative priorities to promote sustainability and long-term outlook of the city, recent fees are designed to cover the cost of their service. And the result of a recommendation by the council and administration working through that, there were many fees that were looked at and adjusted to uh to account for that. And I would mention that in your budget book on page one forty eight, it's towards the back of the book, that all the changes that are recommended from those, you can go back and review those and look at those. The ma- mayor already talked about no property tax increases. As far as utilities rates, uh, the budget includes a three percent increase in electricity rates based on an increase in commodity costs charged by U M P A. It also includes a two and a half percent increase in water revenue based on the implement this implementation of tiered water rates that were developed with the Provo City Water Consultant in harmony with the requirements of the state legislature. So as far as some general fund opportunities, uh, the following sources have been included in the general funds budget. The legacy legacy C I P was was developed and used to budget and track funds in ARPA funding. All of the ARPA funding has been expended and the grants are closed out. The funds, the balance of two hundred and forty thousand from interest earned was used and is proposed to be used um for funding the public safety supplemental requests to close out that fund. Since two thousand thirteen, the city has been transferring one percent of utility rates from the enterprise funds to the general fund for maintenance and construction of roads. Effective in two thousand nineteen, almost six years ago, the state legislator established a county option transit tax. That tax has been providing approximately two and a half million dollars for you annually for roads. Effective January twenty twenty four, so a little over a year ago, the state legislator established a county public transit tax. And that transit tax has been collecting one point mil- one million annually for roads. With these two funding sources now available for roads, it's total about three point six million. And the current needs of the general fund, it was determined to not designate the one percent transfer specifically for roads in the twenty twenty six budget. To meet the council and the budget administrators administrations priorities, the budget in uh increases the transfer currently from enterprise funds from eleven percent to twelve and a half percent of utility revenues. Anticipated fee, anticipated fee increases for the business and rental dwelling study is currently underway. The proposed budget assumes revenues will be increased by a hundred thousand for the business licenses and a hundred thousand for rental dwelling license. and a hundred thousand for rental dwelling licenses. I would mention that, and got an email just today from Laramie Gonzalez and customer service and he has another update and we think we're getting very close to bringing that back to the municipal council. Would mention that fees have not been changed for either of these business licensing or rental dwelling licenses since two thousand and eleven. As far as personnel elements, uh, to enhance, enhance the retention of existing employees and the recruitment of new employees, the following personnel costs are included in the budget across all funds. A cost of living increase of two and a half percent, merits which we've traditionally done of two and a half percent, health insurance costs of six point seven percent, which is effective in January. And what we do each year is we utilize a Milman index, which kind of tells us what the overall inflationary impact is on medical costs. And that amount was five point six in the twenty twenty-five budget and it's six point seven in the twenty twenty-seven. I remember not too many years ago when we were having double-digit increases, I feel like we're still managing, doing a real good job with that. Also included career series advancements, the market study, which included what I talked about with public safety, uh, funded the sick leave buyout that we've had, our retirement system, retirement costs, employee appreciation recognition and the birth parent leave option. Payroll turnover in last year's budget was the first time that we utilized payroll turnover, uh. Um, it provided us the offer two point one million dollar benefit that we could spend and, and utilize services within the general fund. I would get, as far as a report card goes after a year, um, I think it's been a really, really good thing. Um, we are tracking and feel that we're going to have that, those, that much in savings in the twenty-five budget. Uh, what I like most about it is an ongoing revenue source and also it, uh, provides transparency to the council. I've really liked how, you know, police and fire and other departments have come back and said, you know, now we can't rely on our payroll savings, we need to right-size our budget. Well, I think that's healthy. I think as we come back to the council and say, hey, look, we don't have adequate spending and you have an opportunity to review it. And then if we agree, we make the change where before it was just coming from payroll savings, which kind of leaves us all a little bit in the dark. And so I think that's been a good thing. It's also a best practice with larger organizations and I think it's worked well for us. Next page supplemental requests, uh. Each department has the opportunity to submit supplemental requests as part of the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget process. These are requests for funds that have not previously been allocated. This year we had two point two million, which is significantly less than what we've had in prior years. But I think the directors knew and everybody was aware that we're in, we're in a tight year, uh, with revenues and with where we're at. But we still encourage them if they have requests to submit them. Out of that two point two million, one point six are included in the proposed budget and the tentative budget. I would just mention that we will be providing the council with a detailed list of all of the two million, two twenty-four, and then also showing the justification and showing which ones have been funded and you'll have an opportunity to review it, review that. You can see the police and, and most of these were labeled and they told us specifically that it was right sizing. About a hundred and fifty-six thousand for police, fire. And I would just mention that the council just recently did some appropriations for public safety because of some of the needs in the current budget. And these are just going, an ongoing support of those same things. The fire, the paramedic training of seventy-seven thousand, uh, is critical as they need to train their staff and be where they're at. And so those, those, there's the total and those two added together is what I included before. Development Services, we have the two that we talked about with council priorities and then my hometown of nineteen thousand. The costs of my hometown are, are lower than they have been. We're getting a little further on in the phase, but, uh, they continue to do great things and, uh, we work closely with Tara and that's what we're recommending. And also they're looking at this new area as well. As we looked at the elections, we worked closely with the county and they provide the elections for the entire county and this, and the city participates in that and they provided an estimate for us. And we set aside money each year, uh, for the election, but that money was still fifty thousand short. And so we're recommending a additional fifty thousand. Uh, Parks and Rec, uh, as we've opened new parks, they've, they've had a challenge in being able to cover those utilities along with those costs. And so this forty-two thousand would provide utilities for those. We've got some with the Covey, Covey, and that total right there of the general fund is four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, uh. And then if you look at engineering, they're looking at, uh, systems, electrical engineer, and they've got an engineer that they're thinking will be retiring sometime within the next year or two. And there, there's a kind of a, it's real difficult to find and attract the right talent, but even more importantly, it takes time to train. And so they don't want to be in a situation where they, they, they're losing service or having impacts from that. Public Works with them opening up the wastewater treatment plant in June. In this upcoming fiscal year, that we open the entire year. And so they went through and reviewed, uh, the cost to maintain and run that, excuse me, to run the plant, it's four hundred and eighty-six thousand. Airporters, they continue to expand and grow, um, they've got a recommended increase of four hundred and seventy-six, seven hundred. And once again, with each of these, um, we're going to have an opportunity to review those with the council if they have any other questions. And then in total, there's the one point six million that have been funded. I would mention that a number of the supplemental requests that are listed above were offset by a portion, um, there was, there was a revenue component. And so we did, some of these were not full cost, but because they, they're appropriated, they're listed there, but there is a revenue component. And if you wanted to review those or review the supplemental question, you could certainly look at that. Other funded items, um, all recommended vehicle replacements from the city fleet committee were funded. And we feel like this is critical because with vehicles, um, typically if you don't repair those that need to be repaired, uh, a lot of times, I mean, you don't replace those that need to be replaced. A lot of times the repair costs will well exceed the cost of replacing. Also it creates inconsistent delivery and service of the vehicles. And we've just learned over long term that it's important that we, uh, stick with our plan on vehicle replacement. With our Parks and Rec Department in, since twenty-two, we have a funding mechanism established called our Recreation Facilities Capital Fund. What is the general, if the, um, rec center generates a net income, uh, up to four hundred thousand, then we'll take that four hundred thousand and move it over into the rec capital fund for funding. And then if it exceeds that of four hundred and then anything over that will contribute half. And so that's still there. It creates an incentive for the rec center to be self-balancing and to, and to produce net income. And it also sets aside money so that we can have it for long term. The general fund maintains a number of facilities, uh, we have a, a capital replacement plan there where we've been setting aside money. Uh, we looked at that plan and it currently has three, two point seven million dollars in it, been increasing each year. As we looked at it and kind of evaluated, we really feel that there's an adequate reserve for equipment replacement right now. And so we're proposing in this fund not to add to that. But each year that we review closely the balance and look at, uh, and then determine whether we need to provide additional funding. The budget also includes the amount of funding from the recreation arts and parks. We call it the RAP tax that was approved by voters in two thousand and fifteen. We plan on, we're hopeful that that will be, that the election will be successful. We, it's been a great program for the city and for the residents, for us to be able to utilize new parks and maintain parks and do things. And so we're, we've included that in the budget. In summary, um, the budget allows us to make difficult decisions and prioritize the items that we feel like are most important to be funded. The city continues to make dynamic decisions to reduce ongoing expenses and to strengthen revenues. For fiscal two thousand and twenty-six, the administration is proposing a balanced budget. During the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget process, every effort has been made to make good financial decisions and consider both the long-term and the short-term impacts. We welcome and encourage your careful review of the recommended budget. We also welcome the input of residents as we proceed through the process of adopting the city's annual budget. As always, our staff is at your disposal to respond to questions and to assist in a way that the budget, the municipal budget would like over the next several weeks. We believe you will find this budget responsive to your concerns and aspirations and forward-thinking as we work together for the future of the community. And with that, uh, I'm prepared to answer any questions and then they just talk a little bit about the tentative budget resolution. It's a lot, sorry.
Thank you, John. That is, that's a lot. We appreciate your work, that of your staff. Thank you, Mayor Kafusi and Gordon for your helpful presentations tonight. The, um, I heard reports of staff beginning their days at three AM to work on this budget and, and late into the night. We're grateful for all the work behind the scenes to get this document to us, which is in our hands now. And to clarify the process, we will have open public comment tonight. But then we have the public hearing on the two dates you mentioned, John, in June, June third and the seventeenth.
That's correct.
For public input and, uh, and we as a council now have six weeks to review and, and come with additional questions. Thank you, Mayor, for your invitation to bring Keith back in for additional meetings if we feel that's necessary. And special thanks to Andrea for your help working on this budget as well. Um. Are there any questions? So we do have time as a council to prepare and spend over the next six weeks. Any general questions of clarification for, uh, John at this time? Counselor Bogdan.
Mine's more of a Jimmy comment because he's the only one I see here from Public Works. Um, number one, I do appreciate all the hard work that you guys have done in all the budget, everything and the outreach to teach the public about public water rates. The one concern, there's a couple of concerns that have come up about the calculator. Number one, it's kind of hard for residents to know what meter size they have. So when I put it out, I've put out mine with, you know, blanks on my meter thing. And I'm like, okay, I'm a three-quarter meter and I've circled the base rate. And now you find the base rate on the public works site where the calculators are. Some kind of explanation on how to get that base rate would be very helpful to a lot of the residents. The other thing that's very confusing is when I direct them over to my usage dot provo.gov, everything's in T-gals. And it's kind of confusing the conversion from a T-gal to a thousand gallons, right? And so some of that explanation, even like a little figure on there would be very helpful to residents so that they understand what a T-gal is and how they can incorporate that into the calculator. Anyway, if that could happen, I'd be so appreciative. It would help me a lot too. Thanks.
Thanks, Counselor Bogdan. Other questions for John? Counselor?
Whipple.
Whipple, thank you.
Yeah, on the RAP tax and calculating that into the, the revenue, when does the current RAP tax end? When do we stop getting funds from that?
It actually would end a year from July.
Okay, so we will have it this entire fiscal year. So even if the new RAP tax doesn't pass, we'll keep getting it for this fiscal year?
I think it actually, something like, I think it's actually the calendar year. It ends, it ends the end of December is when it does.
Okay, so in doing this calculation, are we only assuming that we'll get RAP tax for half of the fiscal year? Or are we assuming that it will pass and we'll get it for the full year?
The latter.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's an optimistic assumption then.
Yep.
Okay. And then, um, what assumptions were made by the departments about, um, inflation when they were estimating their expenditures?
So we, um, we, we meet with the director, you know, we meet with the directors, we ask, we actually have them, we go through each of their line items. Uh, we held a pretty tight line this year just because, uh, it's just a tight budget, but as we heard specific needs or things that were there, we had them submit a supplemental request or with utilities, we just make sure that our utilities, we're going to be able to cover the costs that are current, upcoming. We didn't want to be in a situation where somebody couldn't pay their utilities. But, but it was tough, but we, we, we listened to those and we don't, and you can talk to the director, but I really feel like our director team feels like this is a budget that they can work with and that they feel good about.
Okay. Yeah, because I know when I'm budgeting and then things cost more than I expect, it throws it off and then I have to cut in other places. But they've already planned for how much they believe it's going to cost.
Yes.
Right. Um, I have a ton of other questions, but those are my only general ones for right now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for John? Thank you, John.
Okay, we still will need to adopt the tentative budget, but I'll, I'll take a seat.
Yes, thank you. The, the item is open for public comment. If there are any here who wish to make a comment at this time, you can come to the podium. Just state your name and city of residence.
Does this have to be on the subject that we just talked about?
I'm sorry, yes, this is on the budget.
I'm like, okay, I think this is a long time.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't make that clear. We'll have public comment to, um, to every item that's on the agenda tonight. If not, we'll close public comment and bring the item back to council for discussion. Any discussion? John?
This will be brief. I just think it's important to know on page twenty-seven in the budget book, uh, you'll see that the bud, the total budget this year that we're recommending is three hundred and twenty-three million, three twenty-six, three ninety-three. And so just be aware that's what's in the tentative budget. We'll be going through all the details of it with you, uh, each fund, each area, but that's just what's in the tentative budget. We'll make you aware of that.
Great, thank you, John. We have our work cut out for us. Thank you very much. I'll call for a vote then on this resolution to tentatively adopt the proposed budget. Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
And Counselor McKay?
Yes.
That motion passes by a vote of six to zero with Counselor Christensen absent. Thank you and thank you again, John, and, and all of those who helped with that. Next, we have a resolution to place an eleven point one three six acre parcel of ground located on the southeast corner of Bulldog Lane and Lakeview Parkway on the surplus property list and authorize the mayor to dispose of the property. This will be presented by our property administrator, Tara Riddle.
Good evening. Um, so just as a description, this property is located immediately south of the Provo High School campus. Thank you. And it's, um, located on the southeast corner of Bulldog Lane and Lakeview Parkway. The parcel contains just over eleven acres and it is a remnant property from when we acquired all of the property needed for the Lakeview Parkway expansion. As typical with all of the properties that we consider for surplus, we did a departmental review with all of the departments that would have a vested interest in the property. And it was recommended that we go ahead and place this property on the surplus property list. And as we've explained in some of our, um, work sessions, the intent of this is to eventually transfer this property to a developer, um, for a housing project, which would include both workforce housing and market rate housing. And the details of that agreement will be forthcoming to the council. So tonight, the only consideration is just the resolution to place the property on the surplus property list. Are there any questions?
Great, thank you, Tara. Any questions for Tara? Counselor Whipple?
So is there an advantage for us to dispose of the property as opposed to keeping it in our control and having it developed?
I think the plan is that we want to go ahead and hand it over to the developer. And already having it on the surplus property list gives them the sense that the council's at least in agreement of getting rid of the property. That's why we're doing that first, if that makes sense.
And it's going to be done through the land trust, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Other questions for Tara? Thank you, Tara. This item is available for public comment. If any would like to speak to this resolution, you can push the podium. If not, we'll bring the item back to council for discussion. Any council questions or discussion? Great, we'll call for a vote then. Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
And Counselor? And Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
That motion passes by a vote of six, zero, with Counselor Christensen absent. Next, we have, we have an implied motion on an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding mayoral compensation. This will be presented by Council Executive Director, Justin Harrison.
All right. Good evening, council. I know we've talked about this, um, at a few meetings previously, including our last work meeting. Um, and I will, I will say that I will not do this as well, nor do I look as good as Daniel Softly. But I will try my best to, to replace him in, in reporting on this. But to give a little context and background for our thousands of online viewers that I'm sure are waiting with bated breath to hear about this. Um, the Elected Officials Compensation Commission was created, uh, or was first, um, appointed by the mayor and council in 2017, um, with the purpose of not having this awkward conversation about elected officials giving themselves pay raises, um, even though I'm sure it's still a little awkward. But the purpose was to bring together, um, a board that was appointed with three members from the mayor, three members from the council, who would then jointly appoint a seventh member, um, to review the compensation of elected officials in similarly, similarly sized cities. Um, so that they could then make a recommendation. So with that background, um, this year, the Elected Officials Compensation Commission was appointed again, meant three members by the council, three by the mayor, and one appointed by the six board members themselves. Um, they worked with the Human Resources Department, including Daniel Softly and Lily Montoya, um, to really look at similarly sized and similar forms of government and how their elected officials are compensated. Um, and with that, um, have made various recommendations. Um, they first presented those findings to the council on April eighth in their council meeting. Uh, and subsequently, two weeks ago, we, we discussed this briefly in our, in our council work meeting. So again, every four years, um, this commission is put together in order to make a recommendation regarding salaries for these elected officials. Um, and the recommendation from the committee for mayoral salary, uh, was just shy of one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. So one hundred and sixty thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars was the, uh, was the commission's recommendation. So this was based off of a variety of factors, including, uh, the fact that, uh, the current mayoral salary is approximately six point four percent below the median salary of mayors in comparable sized cities. They also included an estimate, um, of approximately two point five percent for a cost of living adjustment. And it anticipated that included COLA that John had mentioned that's part of the budget. Um, so there wouldn't be any additional on top of that. Um, with that, I would be happy to take any questions that you may have or, um, yeah, we'll go from there.
Thank you, Justin. Questions for Justin? So the recommended two point five percent COLA then, Justin, that you mentioned is the same two point five percent that's in the budget?
Correct. It's already included in that number.
Okay. Thank you, Justin. We'll now open this item for public comment if there are any here who would like to speak to this issue. If not, we'll bring the item back to council for discussion. Any council input or discussion or questions? Okay, we'll call for a vote. Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
That item passes by, that resolution passes by a vote of six, zero, with Counselor Christensen absent. Thank you. Next, we have an ordinance amending Provo City Code regarding municipal council compensation, also presented by Council Executive Director, Justin Harrison.
All right. Thank you, Chair Garrett. Again, I won't rehash the, the history that we just reviewed. But, uh, for the same purposes, in 2017, an elected officials compensation commission was first convened and is convened every four years to review both mayoral and council's, uh, salary. Uh, the reason why these, um, are separate ordinances is that they must be adopted separately and they are, um, they are in city code. Um, so in twenty, twenty twenty-one, the recommendation for, uh, council member compensation was twenty-one thousand dollars. Um, and the recommendation from the Elected Officials Compensation Commission this year is to increase that. It has increased subsequent, subsequently through cost of living increases, just as salaries across the, the city have. Uh, but the new recommendation is for the salary for, um, council members to be twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. Um, so the recommendation, again, based off of the research that was provided by the Human Resources Department, based off of comparable, comparable sized cities and what compensation is given to their, their council members. Also included, um, a number of caveats. One, um, most other cities include retirement for their city council members. Um, that is not something that you all currently receive. And so that was contemplated in the, um, in the research that was done, um, by the Elected Official Compensation Commission. Um, and that is valued at roughly just over fifteen percent, um, of those elected official salaries. So that was, was included in the, in the thought process of this recommendation. In addition, that cost of living increase was also included, so it would be additional. Um, so again, recommendation of twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Justin. Any questions for Justin? Thank you. We'll open this item for public comment. If there's any, in case there's anyone who would like to speak, they can approach the podium. Seeing none, we'll come back to the council for discussion. Counselor?
McKay.
McKay.
Um, I am grateful that a previous council put in place that we have a commission that looks at this. Um, I don't know all the, all the commission members, but I know a couple. And I know that they are careful with money and funds and that they take it seriously. Um, there is no doubt that I know the incredible amount of time that the mayor puts into her position. I know the incredible amount of time that a lot of councillors put into their position. And it's not a livable wage as is. And I do like the idea of it being a position that someone could take and run for if they couldn't work for free. So, um, I think it's important that we open the demographic up bigger such that it is something that someone could give up the time they have to give up to be a council or mayor and have a livable, um, wage for their time.
To open that range of possible candidates for public office. Thank you, Counselor McKay. Any other public, any other council comment? Counselor Bogdan?
I agree with Counselor McKay. I know that we had one that couldn't run this next go around because of the pay. So it's important that even though twenty-eight thousand is not a livable wage at all, that, I mean, it's not at all. Um, that we do compensate at least, at least a little bit for those that will come after us.
Thank you, Counselor Bogdan.
I, I echo the comments of my fellow councillors. This is something that really concerns me and so this is an important thing.
Great, thank you. I'll call for a vote then. Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
And Counselor Garrett, yes. That motion passes by a vote of six to zero with Counselor Christensen excused. Next, we have an implied motion on an ordinance amending fourteen point three, four point four five zero elderly person extra living space to include health, safety and safety inspection requirements presented by Council Policy Analyst, Malia Daly.
Perfect. Thank you, councillors. So if we just look at the draft ordinance, Kevin, pull it up. Then, um, all this does here, this was, we talked about this, I think, three or two work meetings ago, about just requiring for elderly persons' extra living spaces currently when they register as an extra living space. They are not required to get in health and safety inspection of that living space as part of their registration. But, um, this amendment here, Kevin, if we can go down to the language of the amendment. Uh, well, it just includes, um, a health and safety inspection for it. That's all.
It looks like on line twenty-five, there's a straight O.
Yeah, we'll get that fixed. Thank you.
Thank you, Malia. Any other questions for Malia? Okay, thank you. This item is open for public comment in case anyone would like to approach the podium. They may do so at this time. If not, we'll bring the item back to council for discussion. Any questions or discussion, councillors? Okay, we'll call for a vote then. Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Christensen? Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
That motion passes by a vote of six, zero, with Counselor Christensen absent. Next, we have an ordinance amending the zone map classification of real property generally located at twenty eighty-seven West Center Street. From the one family residential R one eight zone to the general commercial CG zone in the Provo Bay neighborhood presented by Planning Supervisor, Aaron Ardmore.
Hey, thank you, council. Uh, so this application, uh, is just over here on the intersection and off the intersection of Center Street and Geneva. Uh, you can see it there highlighted. Uh, I've produced the arrow map, the zone map and the general plan map. Um, and that's significant because the, the general plan map does show that orange area, which calls for, for mixed use development, uh, which helps support this request. Uh, the, the zone map in the middle, uh, shows the mixed use zone. Uh, that was applied a couple of years back. That kind of portrays that idea of this, uh, being an important intersection for the city. Uh, the applicant is the property owner. They have this property with a, a home on the street, uh, facing Center Street. And then this, uh, barn structure back behind. Uh, the idea behind this proposal is to be able to use the barn for events for, uh, like a reception center. Um, with some other miscellaneous activities that are described, uh, in your packet in the development agreement. Uh, this proposal went before the planning commission. Uh, there were some concerns shared there by the planning commission, uh, that were also shared by staff. Uh, that if we open this up as a general commercial zone, uh, that there's a, there's a number of uses that could go in there that might not be appropriate with R one residential neighborhood right to the west of it. Um, so those concerns were addressed in that development agreement that you have in your packet. Uh, we've tried to, or the property owner and, and staff have, have worked on that document to, to describe the specific uses, uh, that, uh, the, the property owner would feel comfortable with limiting themselves to. Um, I'll just read those really quick. Uh, in four A, a real estate office, reception center, short-term rental, that would just be for the, the home out on Center Street. Art exhibitions, educational classes and photography studio. Uh, you'll notice there, there's also a four B and C. Uh, those were elements that, uh, came out through, B came out through the staff review. Uh, you can see there on the map, one hundred thirty South Street. Uh, it kind of deadens, dead ends in both directions. Uh, it is the, the plan of the city to have that be a connecting street from twenty fifty West all the way over to, I think it's thirty-one hundred. Um, so, so putting that, if there is redevelopment on the site, uh, being able to, to secure that dedication of land for the future street was important to the city. Um, and then, uh, that the commercial uses will be conducted within the existing structures and, and the open spaces on the property. Um, as there are some concerns from the planning commission with additional commercial buildings being built. Uh, so hopefully that has addressed, uh, the concerns that you read in the report of action from the planning commission. Um, it has satisfied the concerns of staff and we are recommending approval of, of the requested zone change. Any questions for me?
Thank you. Thank you, Aaron. Any questions for Aaron? Would the applicant, uh, like to speak at this time, like to add anything to what Aaron has, has stated? Or, or respond to any questions? Do any, uh, councillors have questions for the applicant? Counselor Bogdan?
Peggy, I'm impressed with how you've dealt with all this.
Thank you.
Really good.
Thank you.
Especially with this, she's had some traumatic things that she's had to deal with lately, so.
Thank you so much.
Yes, yes, I'm impressed. And just for the public, she's got such an odd shaped lot here. I really think that what she's doing with it is something that's really good going forward for the public. And in the location where it's at, it just, she's doing something amazing and I like how she's thought of, okay, if I sell this, it could be a real estate place. It could be something a little bit different that would still not upset what's going on around it. So thank you for that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I also saw in the planning commission report, Peggy, uh, questions that they raised relative to hours of operation, uh, alcohol, uh, noise and so on. And, and your, uh, statements later to, um, generally your events wouldn't, um, extend beyond nine or nine thirty.
Nine thirty, I think.
You do not plan to serve alcohol at the venue.
We won't allow them to bring it in either. It's just a non-alcoholic.
So thank you for your sensitivity to those issues raised by, of the planning commission. Any other questions for Peggy or? Okay, thank you, Peggy.
Thank you.
Any other council? This item is also open for public comment if there are any who would like to make a comment on this issue. If not, we'll bring the item back to the council for discussion. Any additional discussion? Then we'll call for a vote. Counselor McKay?
Yes.
Counselor Whipple?
Yes.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Hanley?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
Yes.
That item passes by a vote of six, zero, with Counselor Christensen excused. I was made aware that we have a one member of the public here, at least one who wasn't able to be here in time for public comment due to, um, a class schedule. So I'd like to reopen public comment at this time for any who are here who would like to make a public comment with the same, um, provisions. The, um, they have to be issues in, within the purview of the municipal council. Uh, the council cannot act on any items, um, brought up during public comment. And each commenter would have, uh, two minutes to speak. So you may approach the podium at this time, state your name and city of residence.
Uh, my name is Jensen Cook and I live here in Provo. I'm twenty-three years old and I'm originally from California, but I moved to Provo for my education as a nursing student. And I lived here in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, but I returned in twenty twenty-three. And one issue that I've noticed is that it's difficult to see the land markings at night, even when the weather is clear. Um, there is, this isn't just my experience, but I've talked to many residents who feel the same way. But last night I hit the curb simply because I couldn't see the edge of the road. And this is what pushed me to come here and speak today. What's important to note is that I have twenty fifteen vision, which is sharper than twenty twenty. I have blue eyes, which is known to perform better in low light conditions. And on top of that, I drive with high performance LEDs. And on top of that, I drive with high performance LEDs. And so if I still can't see the lanes, how much hotter is it for everyone else to see? Provo is home to BYU students and some of UBU students live here, which means that a large portion of young drivers from all over the country, many of whom aren't used to the snow or poor nighttime, poor nighttime driving conditions. This makes the road visibility even more crucial. I understand that traditional razor reflectors aren't compatible with snowplows, but recessed, snowplow resistant reflectors and specifically designed for cities like ours. Studies have shown that reflective materials like these can diminish nighttime accidents by up to 50%. Trying them out on the most problematic roads would be a smart and safe investment. I hope you'll consider the pilot program on a budget allocation to test these reflectors. Thank you for your time and for reopening this. And thank you for all the work you do to keep Provo safe.
Thank you, Jensen. We appreciate your public comment. Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment? If not, we'll close public comment. And if there's no objection, we'll now adjourn the Provo Municipal Council Meeting by unanimous consent. Thank you.